The second day on the news is that the fourth special session will begin. And we will see if they will go to the delegate's room, the 8th. We will open the session. The delegate's room is empty. The Lord has been there. I remember the last time, I was in the house. I was not going to the house, but I was going to the house. I came back from the house and I went to the house. I was in the house, I was going to the house. I came back from the house. I was going to the house. The delegates. And then I was in the house, I was going to the house. And I was going to the house. I was going to the house. I went to the house. I came back from the house. The session was in the house. I was going to the house. I came back from the house. I was in the house. I was going to 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 the house. I came back from the house. Amen. I am sorry, the 8th. Did you go to the delegate's room?
Speaker Gibson Kanai.
Oi.
Delegate Jay Blesso Ador Roy.
Oi.
Delegate Yuta Kagi Bones Junior.
Oi.
Vice Speaker Mario S. Colibert. Delegate Noah Kamsong. Delegate Portia Franz Cosole.
Oi.
Delegate Sebastian R. Marino.
Nortian.
Delegate Elender Nyiram Gati.
Oi.
Delegate Stephanie Nyir Oime.
Oi.
Delegate Rebecca Sebald Nyir Ma'at.
Nortian.
Delegate Francisca Rulugod Otto.
Oi, I am Nortian.
Delegate Mongur W. Alul.
Oi.
Delegate Timothy R. Sinzak. Delegate Nace Enzualaply.
Present.
Delegate Silveryous O. Talley.
Oi.
Floor Leader Warren S. Umetaro.
Oi.
Mr. Speaker, would you like to call?
I would like to call. I agree with the the transact of the last time. But I think the floor is going to be empty. We will talk about the vice speaker. I agree with the floor leader. But when the delegate's room is empty, we will talk about the floor leader. We will talk about the floor leader. If the experts are there, we will talk about the floor leader. If they are not there, we will talk about the floor leader. They are not there. We will talk about the floor leader. Because they are not there. Because they are not there. They are not there. If the floor is empty, we will talk about the floor leader. If the floor is empty, we will talk about the floor leader.
So the speaker, the floor leader, the members. My word of business. The morsel journal calendar, item four. I have a table for adoption. Mega motion adopt. Blanket motion for adoption first day journal, fourth regular session. Twenty fifth day journal, fourth regular session. I am trying.
So the the motion for him to the floor leader will continue the motion today.
Oi.
On top, the floor leader.
My word, my word, our presidential communication. The number fifty. The president who is the speaker. The PD one version FY twenty twenty six. The transmitter, House Bill number twelve dash twenty three dash three HD two SD nine CD one. Now Presidential Draft one. Item six Departmental Communication. I am trying. Item seven, eight. The Senate Communication. Number sixty five. The President of the Senate. Transmitter cell CD one version. House Bill number twelve dash twenty three dash three HD two SD nine CD one. Item nine. Conference Committee Reports eleven. I agree with the speaker. I agree with the speaker. Third reading. Mega motion at this time. House Bill number twelve dash twenty three dash three HD two SD nine CD one PD one.
I agree with the floor leader. I think the PD one president will go to the chairman of the committee. I agree with the floor leader. The transmitter will be opened. The floor will be opened. The chairman will go to the floor. So the speaker, the floor leader, the floor leader. The speaker said. The delegate's room is empty. I came back from the house. I agree with the speaker. I agree with the speaker. The speaker said. I agree with the speaker. I agree with the speaker. The speaker said. I agree with the speaker. I agree with the speaker. I agree with the speaker. The delegate's room, the chairman of the committee.
So the speaker, the floor leader, the members. The delegate's room, the floor leader, the members. So the chairman, he is not there. He is not there. The floor leader, Mr. Speaker. Chairman, the delegate's room is empty. The floor leader. House Bill number twelve dash twenty three dash three HD two SD nine CD one. The process is the article nine section fourteen fifteen. I came back from the house. The both houses. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the floor leader. The finalizing. The president. I agree with the process. The president said. I agree with the process. I agree with the F Y budget bill, Mr. Speaker. I agree with the floor leader. The floor leader. Section twenty, subsection B. The delegate's room. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the funds, I mean grants, donations. The donors. International, outside partners. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the clause. I agree with the donations. By law or by joint resolution. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the president. The paragraph two. The letter in paragraph two. I agree with the the approval by joint resolution or by law. I agree with the time. I agree with the time. I agree with the time. Let's say Ministry. I agree with federal grants. To name a few. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the specific requirements. Timeline, deadlines. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the requirements. I agree with the grants. I agree with the floor leader. To name a few. The president. I agree with the floor leader. The delay of the additional review process legislative approval step. I agree with the the deadline and timeline. I agree with the outside. I agree with the president. I agree with section twenty subsection B. I agree with the approval of grants. I agree with the delay of the review and approve of spending. I agree with the speaker. I agree with the grant. I agree with the quarterly report. I agree with the Ministry of Finance. I agree with the reports. I agree with the grants. I agree with the floor leader. 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 I agree with the reduction. I agree with the compensation. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the the president. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the FY twenty twenty six, Mr. Speaker. I agree with the speaker.
I am sorry, the chairman. I agree with the any members who can clarify. I am sorry.
I am sorry, the speaker. I agree with the speaker. The floor leader. I agree with the section twenty. I agree with the grants. I agree with the hospital. I agree with the grants. I agree with the grants. I agree with the cancer program. I agree with the CH. I agree with the I agree with the grants. I agree with the government. I agree with the I agree with the the time. I agree with the floor. I agree with the chairman. I agree with the floor leader. I agree with the delegate's room. I agree with the grants. I agree with the timeline. I agree with the deadline. I agree with the return. I agree with the floor. I agree with the I agree with the compliance. I agree with the floor. I agree with the government. I agree with the government. I agree with the I agree with the I agree with the speaker.
I am sorry, the delegate's room. I agree with the I agree with the floor leader. The delegate's room. So the speaker, the floor leader. The speaker. I agree with the I agree with the president. I agree with the speaker. I agree with the I agree with the Senate. I agree with the president. I agree with the process. I agree with the speaker. I agree with the I agree with the support. I agree with the accountability. Transparency, fair and equitable. I agree with the stimulus. I agree with the grants. I agree with the grants. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the requirements. I agree with the grants. I make sure. I agree with the special. I agree with the grants. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the real time. I agree with the rules. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the requirements. I agree with the executive. So the speaker. So the delegate's room. The speaker. The speaker. The leader. The speaker. I agree with the president. I agree with the questions. I agree with bills. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the control. I agree with the I agree with the questions. I agree with the control. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the speakers. For this time, I I mean the leader. The president. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the president. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the questions. I agree with the special. I agree with the I agree with the chairman. I am sorry, your statement.
I agree with the speaker. I I twenty twenty six. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the reverse back. I agree with the morsel. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the streamlined I agree with the speakers. It's a little language. The grants received from development partners and donors. I agree with here by authorized to be appropriated and are appropriated in the amounts received for those specific programs or projects. I am sorry before in other budgets. I agree with the that they are received and are appropriated for the purposes they were intended for. I agree with the speakers. With criteria, requirements for implementation. I I agree with the speakers. I agree with speakers. I agree with the restoration. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the H two version. I stand to be corrected. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the policy. I agree with the speakers. I agree with speakers. So the delegate's room.
I am sorry, the floor leader. I agree with the speaker. Marino. So the delegate's room. I agree with the speakers. I understand president. Timeline issue. I agree with the grants. I agree with the I agree with the speakers. The original language. Budget bill. Close out. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the practices. I haven't heard of any issue rising from their particular practices. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the ministry of finance. I agree with the I agree with the speakers. I agree with the issues. I agree with the ministry for such programs. I agree with the I agree with the I agree with the For the past many years. I agree with each of the speakers. I agree with speakers. I agree with the 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 year twenty twenty six. I agree with the year one year period. I agree with speakers. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the president. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the speakers. I agree with speakers. So the delegate's room. I am sorry, the delegate's room.
I agree with the speakers. I agree with the speakers. I agree with I agree with the House of Delegates. I agree with the speakers. 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 I agree with I feel like I'm it out. You cannot do the job. I agree with the speakers. I agree with the I need that money. I agree with the I agree with the I am sorry.
I am sorry, the speakers.
Yang manzaula, ngesara, ora ulaflat kaba, eh, ngarolo?
Oh, espidi, bekil rawladmara, eh, k'angalakwadimla.
Oh, digetra.
Esaspidi, amal unututal mor kau ma, paisa, florider, mar beclad. Espidi t'ang'a, amal ungil, heldi diskasyon ra latutau, eh, maklortutelil policy, maran giredel masadri. Hmm, ak, na'ongiisel bablingela president, t'agri ngira ay gel point. Endi, ma ka, m'ringaragam, diak singcurt t'ang, eh, endi osisil time, eh, akumral kuasit tial policy agiredel impugri. Ah, ne, di, so'ka espidiren, wa'antension urgidel mora, el akdamal dimasadot tial ngarala, dimasadakwanto. Endi sel malkorel di sibundasu ngiredel albanar ngia awasi, sel ngarak institucion, sel ngarak instituciona, se'ya, au ulmugida albanartial policy. Sel ngarak instituciona, akmukwa say, aroku'nu do'udel mesowis rablurbel. Amo soyisbra omasana, ya olbi ra klulawa mo', appropriate. Di, nor niataim, eh, maybe ay gel gidde l'go president kaplo donaswar. Kadama no'entertain ngidgid, l'udas, ngidgid policy, lwasi, m'karadre linmo, obiot ra'wiot, au ulmaktridal akregel osada president. Endi ulgamendia kalmutel other issue, giredel considered, et tial ngartial el al PD1, ah, tut, ah, akri rin, lutotuli. Endi ulmakwasigidel muntro'n dasu tial policy. El akdungadu kora dimasadakwanto, eh, yes, ngaria nu'rsomartokkan, lubudel, ay gel grant, t'ngania tamlani. Ng'ngi ay gel programsel, ilfandet by this grant, ngaria tan table ngi, eh, abodrul tapetokon, the procedures, ma requirement ta'tang mome'u. Ay gel gidha ulmakwasitang, ngiredel, ah, omesitang, ngaria improvement t'seladutmok. Kadu k'adimasadakwanto, may g'idid timeline, kame, ikw'antension urgidel mora igal stimulus rataywa. Ak, diaksel, s'rispidiren, dikw'kadiwa, kame, dikw'kadiwa say ngarak twenty billion. Ay gel na'ut timeline, ay gel selamen ngaria blakta'kl wasin, ngaral programsa, ay gel twenty million amorri, eh, girel morke'el belu, eh, o'ngerae ngirel na'toda, at'ya, at'ya, telal portion ngi, guk mora, aral program. Ay gel gidhiya, ay giredel considered. Sel g'unestra twenty million, eh, mesowis rablurbel. El diagboldrus, egidipisil olbi ngara konstitucion, segidarulakal mo', ondasu, ah, segirel giredel muntro ngalomut. Yes, amor hospital, eh, lamkatmok, oh, aral artokta manus, maybe, sube'del, uspe'ran ngidgid t'letal, ilim blakta'kl, ekadambe'ngeli wasin, diaksel ganse'na ngagara tokora koraksion, ma tokora politics, l'ekwasin, m'ringera, ar'abel on'ra, amoto male, ah, Ministry of Finance, ah, uspe'rtir, tiparegor de, eh, report. M'ngmo misiusen, sube'del, mor segidil accountability. Endi again, kame don, eh, nar onlitaywa, ng'aganya bebir rablur miskidal udo, sel edu wasin blank check. Eh, diakal katmokla timeline ngi, t'aga, ma president ta'ngar segid, oh, gore wasin, telan million amorri, ra telan million amorri. Segidya, ondasu, au ulmugiredel albanan, momilo ondasu t'ang. Akpahin, yo'wrengasuli ra, ar senetors, no'uknamo amadatanga, ngartian ekfil guilty, lwasin ngaramindirnak questioner tial tokon. Eh, akumral wasi, t'ang'abla talabor ni, ah, issue ra in the past. Endi dimla ha, political will, ma will power, ar'adra olbi sel time, ikutukli. Di regal so'ka, me'g'rapoint lwasi, diakasirin president, el mo'kongir tial, pre'epas ringi'la mora president. Leng, it's a power. It's a political power. M'ng, ak, akparondasus ngiredel momil, nomesernia wasi, ng'rasel malunit policy mora blurbel. Regardless of who is sitting president. Ahm, akmal dimu'te dimu'tu rataywa, sel twenty million, kame, machin, ulgu'mer tial olbi ra'ululaw. Ili tial kawada ay gel C I P, ili tial kau mondha three hundred thousand. Ulgu'me, tial olbi ra'ululaw, ma president ta'tmaklou'ur, eh, identify ke'el priority needs ra blurbel. Ekadamo'aidal wa el alshil sel a'aidai, takumdasu entobdrowunbi, ingatov se'otukpumole la blurbel. M'ng, again, ay gel gidhal besmet, endi maral matar besmet tial time. Endi, t'ang'afal relevant el mora budget bill tial, the issue, ah, a language, ngartial gidde budget bill, do'lar ngi ra bekel fiscal. This is the good time and right time, el considered t'gidde policy. Sulara espidi.
Yang manzaula, manzaula, ah, uldeswig, ak tiril, tiril lo, oh, dirigan mio'du adelgetra ngiwal, eh, akumdasu ay gel gidde policies, se'adukutel, el meral alshil tial biral gotelme, eh, labisa'itl oldeng, akumdasu resit tial gidatrapalasil ungil, il botom eserni, edemral, l'endirigal giredel masang, l'eng, ahuk'tudul wasin, for accountability ra udo ra, ay gal kwanto, ah, donations me, emu'ngirel momilo eserni way say, way say example, molgonese twenty million alme, en'ulila bodosar ngi, ma president. Endi ngiredel, m'ringel wasi, ahuk poria, sisbra politics t'ltial blay, en'ulin me'ukdoma. Akulkori lwasi, bodom esernia wasi, sel bodom eserni, ekadamo'ngil su'bil wasi, m'ng'garai sube'del, eh, derivior ngi, endi k'ador, ah, di tial time, m'ng'orinya ay gel gidde koraklos ra, whatever, dosarimolal se'el. M'ng'ra klo'tutel bodosar ngi, my bebir ra ay gel bladot time, ma prespidi. Kaba ng'edelgetra ng'alo?
Espidi, malu tutalokol kau ma, bekelad, ma adra kamitira, ah, urgidra, o'isemins, etira, ukunmatte urgid tial, m'lewerela kalfi ra, about houses. To'lespidi, akum, akmalasmal mo'ora understand t'ial, el section B, el tioksisibi elang PD1. Eh, ah, akado, eh, we'reela, about houses, sel kalfiga mitiya, agil'tmakla w'reeril, m'osal gotelkuru babl'sapel, odiruklil, with this in it. Di t'ya ya process, a president ta'hu emsa, eh, guk'tobedi isel PD1 ngi, lo'otisel concern ngi, et t'ya idaba bilngel blakta'kl. M'ga cambregel, lase t'ya dinakalbiot tau'ge'el. T'ya it took months, ma many days, ma m'leklo argument ra, adimlangar differences about houses, eh, finally, they came up with CD1 ng'angarngi sel argument ra, everybody was ay galgin apototuko. Libigus of the, ah, timeline, el gidha dor ngirelang, m'ringel wasina, arakablementa, at it to'gol, at emre'la, k'amel, ahukuldasas, sing, ng'aria angasansilakol. Et t'yalakamkatmok, aboda idangi, engkroko, k'el'morinya talaman. Eh, gidha di regal m'ringel wasa, olbi la se'el vipasit t'ang, lolutil ma president, eh, ngi obakisi el se'el vitort t'ang, olamme'ere'ng molla, ah, sel lapsa'igil de'isin. Akmalasmal espidi, mo'understand ra, m'leintente t'ial, el m'leamendmentel, gundasit t'ya, al'adra senate talilia. Ngel m'leathor t'ang, ng'arahma, m'lemoktegring, m'le'at tial amendmenta sen. Eh, we've heard the many concerns, lwasi, t'ang'a, asumgodokongi ngi'la, molla, eh, delay, it's gonna take some times for many other grants, ng'ia mosabel approval lo'gi'a, olbi ra'ululaw. El gundasa, m'leintension ra, ngel adel ng'ia m'leintroduce t'gal amendment, ah, wasa focus on di, ay gel bladuk umson, adel getta'umsong ora blurra, k'angayang. La sel, section ra sena konstitucion, el mo'taklil mergid, ah, adra bela, lwasi, ay gero'ku'nu do'udel mesowis bra blurbel. Amor umsang'lela blurbel, et tovde lo'gi'ala, m'ning metro olbi ra'ululaw. Ma k'ondasut t'ya, di regal ondasu lwasi. Ulgu'muknu amendmentel gukwasin, ndi gel stimulus rataywa, asapsetel metro olbi ra'ululaw, engkukmo'agara, standing ngi. Ekadambe'ngi ay gal grant ta'losada, sel meraheld, ah, watokor hospital, amal blakta'kl, lwasin, ng'aria omi'tela, ay gal udo, rotirak, ay gel ne, eh, requestel merapropulsel ra gal grant. And then there are reporting factors, ng'ia girel involved by gal, udo'ugel, legal, different ministries, al amla'orang, any other branch ra government t'ng'ia, amisiba'gal. Akumdasu, say gel al, ben sisba olbi ra'ululaw, p'da, ah, libora debate, el ma'masadu, say, ay gakadamak'ara p'do'ltau, emla debate ra, intension ra grant. Eh, akumdasu, that's a clear violation, ra ay gel intuvi'la donors, lwasi, ay g'omaskumil, l'ng, omolaval meru'la watest ra, ah, wa NCD, tokorawakobitang'ra, m'ng, t'ang'malogadel da'ol sapset. And then again, t'atamalil ra adra olbi ra'ululaw, t'gel na'ttang'angil di'it tial, lil'isi tial molla, and it's been practiced for many years, like water lyrics. Gida, ah, ngatang'la kau mondara to'yl, na'ulolak t'ial bla'et tov. El agid almost seringira many years later, eh, ah, di regal wasi, m'ngdi dagakat'al the debate t'ang, and digedamlamis wasi, t'ang na'tal sapset olbi ra'ululaw. Lwasi, ay gal udo, g'mesowis belaw, abol'otirak, ra'gen po'ra blurbel, m'osowis ba umsang'le meto. Libigus, t'ya gidde, m'lela, el mesapisi el, ay gal udo, lwasin diak, m'so'is, be'merkwan'anga, otirak, ra'gen diak sapset al mora, appropriation olbi ra'ululaw. And then again, correct me, fanbro'ng, eh, sel merah'isemins, gidha di regal m'ringi, ay gal kwantisel lemela, ulide ng'arngi sel ten percent, et tov ng'ilma'wa, president t'ang'ia olre'triningi ng'araygel, lungilw'batel le'lmawa, olre'tel. M'ga, amal yaktok understand t'ial wasin, ng'ramal m'leintension t'ang, gidhakadam m'lefocus ratokora, ay gal stimulus rataywa, which is yang, to me, and make sense. Lwasi, bolse'el, ay gal bekel state, el m'ng'ia omsondi, el ng'abi ngel t'ial udo. Endi, in general, lwasi, ro'ku grant, el mesowis rablurbel, eng maybe ng'lamorinya ay gel gidde bebir amomondal lwasi. Ma tokora education, el gidel m'omsada, ah, ah, orala, abukse dugul mete'adugul, mam'ala, basen ta'lgida momra it. Eh, adonor, ahukma akm'wasin diak, ndi'ukm'utamla'udog, lo'omla itisel ne, eh, intente t'ial grant. Eh, t'ya diagal kora, ay gel grand sapset espidi, ndi ng'aga positionera, ah, oldub, sel merpositionera, akalfi gamitir gid ma sene, el tiran ne disayde lwasin diak, topi it t'ang'ra. Endi, madangalira, ahuk position ra president lwasi, di regal guk, ma sel tokora timing, mesel process olbi ra'ululaw. And we can take weeks to agree, ay gidde t'ial namsa, t'ial nomregel, ay gal fi'la wasin, dimla k'la'wiot. Many hours am spent, eh, finally, everybody came to understanding my agreement, eh, sel version ra, ay gidha tilob de ma president, but this is the process a president ta'hu, truly a PD1 me. Ah, do'olbi ra'ululaw, mo'kutmokwe'w. Oh, manzaula espidi.
Yeah, manzaula, il'dadam, ah, insaisera, tial tokon, ah, vice speaker.
Speaker, malunututan merkau ma, kolige, madatul delegets. Eh, speaker, maluninigidil mal, tro'ugulto'um lamadu'ngi, malunit pointsel uku'ni, gundasun diak, tarigidil wasi, ay gidha k'tamalatukon, ma, t'yal issue speaker, amlamot, it's eastern two timesel, al pastor bi'la, d'ngi, ah, pringinzing, o'adilon momo'it. Endi, ah, maral, ta'tukos speaker giredel mo', umral wasin giredel mo' visitri. Eh, g'musat t'yal b'ngiya president, ah, t'yal le'flale'ler ngi, mes number fifty, m'ng'ora accountability, ma transparency, gidha m'ringel wasi, on tokolabisabela, on'ra, ah, tokorawak finance, amal ungil, ah, w'reeril, report, ta'tokorawu du espidi, eh, inram expenditure. Mahm, endi, akumral wasi, akmal konsen gidha do'olbi sel, pre'nesa distribution ra gal udo. Ah, segidakundasen trau'ul, m'ngmo, tegidil amendmenta kilob. Endi, ah, espidi t'ang'akumral wasit t'atara, policy mare we'g'labdung. Policy mare, la giredel mo' visitriya udu time, ndi'k'ringasulir, ngil introducir t'ial amendmentel. Ma'lo al'degel, pli t'galbuldasu, sel ngiredel, m'utel meserngi'len, ndirek'ldiakal, o'sedilya, ta'ankul delegetra, b'ng'angayang, ng'ara konstitucion, m'direk'liku'ra praktisal, ta'tokora, b'ngi'la udo espidi, ngiredel, amu'borak'adunir uku'li. M'ng'ia ng'elu olbi ra, t'gidde grants, merbelaw. Em'arabbi ra'wanselme, sel me'ngadias twings atats. M'ng, uk'tal se'el di, eh, o'se, m'be'ra olbi ra olbi, beside to appropriation. N'gukmo, eh, eh, possibility se'el lu se'el udu. Umral wasit t'ya, kmo'epasit ngi, ng'aria, wansamadak. M'ng, t'gel, k'ran to'sekal grant sa'ngaria, ng'aria, yelu'ul, ogia, politics, ogia, ah, k'ukalip, usipasidira, blu ma'lu, tokoradiplomacy espidi, mo', mospe'el mo', ogi'la moba'el, uli'ngukmo, at'akadamolbi ra'wans. Ma ka, y'g'ira y'g'ira bi'la policy mare, esaspidi, ma chemena o'isemins, m'ningi ay gel, ameserni, eh't, sel original bi'la president, m'gudul tovde, t'ya k'ajosa'ul tovde, k'adumral wasi, require a multurukid diskasyon. Akumrala, chemena o'isemins, kama'ba's, umsul'lamalunidu. Senemda, bol'talgudem, r'goda, etakangero, k'uvet tial versiona president. E'mgoda, eh, 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 seda tingel ma senate lwasi, a president. Agi, vedil, kantirin m'udug, g'isegit particularly amendmentel, divizetri. Eh, g'ug'ut espidi, bay m'goda m'utikalbi, posida adablami ra, ah, or, erimnamusiks andrel, namusiks. Misela espidi.
Eh, nsaula, vice segida, ora, ulibonlontil, mansumun diak, adra, di'ga, girel manm'adudure langi, eh, bolse'el bay ng'wasin kiyo. Madakmon t'ira, Claire, k'ang'ua, Rokol.
Deleget Jay Blesso, adra Karoy.
Oy.
Deleget Yuta Kagi Bones Junior.
Oy.
Vice speaker Mario S. Coliver.
Oy.
Deleget Noah Camsong. Deleget Portia Franz Cosole.
Oy.
Deleget Sebastian R. Marino.
Oy.
Deleget Ellender Ngiramkati.
Oy.
Deleget Stephanie Ng'iroime.
Oy.
Deleget Rebecca Sevalt Ng'irma'at. Deleget Francisco Luquod Otong.
Oy.
Deleget Manguru W. Alul.
Oy.
Deleget Limot P. Arsinzak.
Lo.
Deleget Nays Enswalaply.
Yes.
Deleget Silveryous O Talley.
Oy.
Florider Warren S. Umitaro.
Oy.
Deleget Noah Camsong. Deleget Rebecca Sevalt Ng'irma'at. Diak. Speaker Gibson Kanai.
Oy. Eh, otaklakamano.
Mister Speaker, Senkeol, Ma'housepin, number twelve, dash twenty-three, dash three, HT2, ST9, CD1, PD1, a fourteen yes, et uno.
Ke'isegida, Senkeol, fourteen amle yes, et uno, ay gidha malful houser t'ang, m'ringasulir, adesia mobisaltra, we're demlapasa, asel unified pasit. Florider.
Eh, espidi, kadambe'la adadura ulel, ng'aria kora, olu'udel resolution, sel swadal mo' consider el this time, eh, t'adirg'umatmokl mo', subel moro'sel mora beclad, make'untira short recess at this time.
Segida, ontila, Florider, short recess, umtiriru'ul go'eda, do'y, ontok, na'wis. Asesia'ri, al'mutumo, visume, Florider.
Permore, mes speaker, kadungar sel, item thirteen, resolution calendar, eh, domesendia ka, ngartial agenda'ri, ding'aria, tablul resolution, el, wa'igel d'vilura u'ei, or, or, u'del kadama, at this time, ak, make a motion, al suspend ra rules, eh, applicable rules t'ial blay, eh, place ay gal, tablul resolution, ra, adoption. Sel gota House Joint Resolution Number Twelve, Dash Four- Sel gota House Joint Resolution Number Twelve Dash Fourteen Dash Four S, seigilamo number one, uh, adoption calendar. Uh, ongerunga, House Joint Resolution Number Twelve Dash Fifteen Dash, uh, Four S, make a motion, uh, place igal tiya tablo ra adoption.
Okay, seigil, uh, a motion ra Floride, for suspension ra rules, ergiid, uh, si siu time and placement, tragegi, el tablo resolution, tirerogul go ngel, wasin da place igel doy, on to, so place de Floride.
Uh, lo iceek, uh, okotmuklia, uh, longerul motion. El adapt ra House Joint Resolution Number Twelve Dash Fourteen Dash Four S.
Okay, seigil, ontila clear, malu ya, title resolution.
House Joint Resolution Number Twelve Dash Fourteen Dash Four S. A House Joint Resolution honoring and commending her excellency Jessica C. Lee, Ambassador extraordinary in plenty potential of the Republic of China Taiwan to the Republic of Palau and expressing sincere credit due for the goodwill and support she showed to Palau. The other introducing a speaker, Kanai, Vice Speaker Coliver, ma Floride Umetaro.
Seigil, uh, title resolution, ma, um, didibodo, uh, tiraa, uh, vice speaker, uh, chairman of the forensics, maluwa dimo, on ter, ma mel, gorasmoli, tel resolution.
Speaker, um, briefly, uh, the resolution speaker, dimo, um, yo singa, ma sa momrae. Um, na mekakter, um, is speaker, um, uh, Jessica C. Lee, namasador, uh, lu taipan de belau. Na mekakusera, vellel, momrae, ma, one. Tiya speaker, dimo, emrengasule nganmaasa, toku, toku ngiesu, um, sabsebe el, ngia uun, um, ngina blu belau. Toka giga nga, se tiya speaker, momension, gagegi ngies. Uh, eto abu, misa igang, ndidi, seigil, speaker, kua tiya tiya resolution, emrengasule nganmaasa, uh, emrengasengamoni ya, uh, kora pedim, ser morning, morning, tiya resolution speaker.
Speaker, if you recall it, Tulu nga sahikaititl, el gurula kubid ma vaccine saradillir umenge. Temlo aigel gotul kuru babal sapuri. Eh, tiyal dungululul durokrunia, platal preng saradakra Maes Robert Solose. Mlemisekodra aigel cargo holdra skogi. Ma, temlo omtigradyal ra umenge, el mekmey der belau. Mat dungulotigir. So, when it was difficult to find the way to get it here, emlo aisegid ngilasaradyal ra umenge. Esaya, agoramla mo'omol tel teletele la Taiwan, el malkamite del me olngseorgidar adra belau. Ah, tokora tourism, el malu'ule, engarnia udo'udlo mu'lu'ut tiyal, el government teridil, amlegirel start, sel gotul mare del temelsa bed. Yeah, Taiwan before all other flights as well. Emle te'gav risker sel travel babol eh osupi sel, el gotul skogi, ra China eh. So, before everybody became a, ah, regular flights through to Palau eh, Taiwan, amle resume segidil travel babol, eh, el alshilts, emlamo four flights a week. Maldi imoldel langsong sra, ah, United Airlines. Ak direkamal recognize, emrenga sawgirel aigel infrastructure development regal state, ogiwa stimulus, other grants, ak madangliastay traimli gel malmormal. El mangatmo'klarael, el sel walgoramle'ulela, aigal palasira Taiwanara aigel stimulus, el wasaya aigidar role, aigaya nerve endings sra economy. Mkanek teridil mura. Abetogel opportunity ma possibilities el girela ogurulela development ma geisaira aigal state teridil. Renga sulirarael, renga sulirra effort til, el enhance sra tigingela tourism, regal state. Ak remember ak gotul mura opening ceremony rseli engarval, esel tourist site traimli, tiakpon engal Jessica Lee dongokra. Mang ndiakavilo omes aigel engarler tiyal erungul blur belau. Temdangli ekargik el wasaya, aigal state teridil ah owner resources, ra blue, ma da'vrti'al blue. Mata olta'ut aigegidil platal drengsurtir alongododu lo se development, begins from the bottom up. Tomo'urigis, ah, aigal turim ilalum state, emangatmo'kregidil mgo sapedil lotakao a diakali gel, diakavili gel lurul blue, tel gibel migit klow, el tokora developmental mosurti'al erungul belau. Ndiakali gage, ndiakavili gageidil maklow tigingela tourism, ma infrastructure. Ak direkal recognize urtil engarnia aigel, el migegreel mura u'dupeel ma, ah, migegreel groups, aigal community groups, login sel Taiwan Small Grant Skin. Ora, tel gibel migegreel udo'udin dingosutirar adra, aglulke rai gal blue, aigel osingirra pe'tulshilts. Rako'ra, oygabal migegreel tokoi, osea, arayla balnamo'oreomlo, atao ah malmlamo'kus godulo. Igeidil sapedil u'dupee, delige trangartmaue, emsi bauli ulra sel atao eh, embeledais, ya'ra adra blue, ah, adra blue. Kamopart ra aigegidil tokoi. Olubongol tigingaye, speaker adimo renga sulir tiyal, Taiwan Technical Mission. El ulmo'ra ngarananti na'iwane tiagidra erangar blue raimli, engar seyide olngse'orablu'ul belau ro. So, in that manner eh tiyal, emsime ma ambasador ma adra Taiwan, apartra, tramilirar adra imli. Makti mogi'ablo bongol te'al eh, mal renga sulir la ambassador Jessica Lee e wajel blal du otakal delige trairai. We wish you all the best, in the future, wherever that may be. Sulang te'al speaker.
Em sawra'ul, el dadu ra omrenga sawrangarnia mutsual nu'adu, abnilio. Sulange speaker eh, ak direkamaldi mumte'abnilio emrenga gel sulir la, ambassador Jessica Lee malmukul girela abnilio, magi malmukul urelil girel belau. Makmaldi bo'renga sulir eh, emgodiregal wish her the best, ah, future endeavors ngil enga, ngamal mudugul af. Makmadangli kwasia, ngormugla ya, ngamalmugla future ngi el direkil, loborabulwal en direkil, dimlat kregida adra belau emangatmo'klajel urelil. Lubuk mo'olngse'uridil ra ablulam, sulang speaker.
Em saw, a'ngalget gibons.
Maldi gatabe, gata'kalbul telan minutes. Speaker, ak timo atagel butokulungil tokon lamdu alshil tiyal ulala. Hmm, kudadi madangli wasing blakarungul orul orep ta butokulngesun ma aigal betkel, tiyal community ra blue belau. Disel malmo sakalser ngi nganga, direkamal blakarungul, lo maesa aigal betkel, a, aigal high school. El promota eh, masma engoritcha ngalgel belau, direkamal muraskura blue ra Taiwan. Nige'damadangli wasin mal direkamakasa ngalgel del mura wat Taiwan eh, direkam butokulngidil mura wamri gel ma. Eh, kuda hmm, makara rubangel, el malasmal, mongadudur ngalgel, nige'dambe sa'askura Taiwan ah, malungil provide arukul mura ngalgel belau. Full scholarship, tokora school, ma tuition, ma ablirir, ma stipendatim, tamral, katmokmung, mngse' humesang manle'wan ra, urelil lo maesa aigal betkel high school eh, delgetra irai, embasapromota. Esel ogiru speaker akama dangi. Nda'kalde losi sapau'dudel me help pra community teridil, ah, aigal CIP maral project. Nige'dawana mal, lo do, mongadudur ngi la ambassador, ah, Lee. Ah, tokora investment ra adra Taiwan el merablu'ul belau. Mang lastera domitinging, lo malkul wasing, hmm, digos aigel dalontit, emlosi el reach out emongadudutigil butokaududil adra business ablur Taiwan. Manggi tiyal mura Taiwan ra'uingarang. Emnargia triidil adal koklos express ra interested tiyan, el me invested yang, lingdru se'gidal communication lo bangal ambassador ah, Lee. Mang nige'da madangli ral wasing ngarinya interested el butokaududil adra time, so'ri me establish a business etir belau. Mang nda'kalde losi aigale udo'udel, wa grant el me help pra aigal state, ma aigal community program ngid. Ndirigal swalo, millasmal help pra, build la ungil investment el merablu'ul belau speaker and diswal. Renga sulir la sel mal lungil urelil eh, wajel olkobilio eh, wish her aigel best, ah, endeavor ngi ra, future ngi speaker and sulang.
Sawla, emos anymore a'ngalget tang esar.
Malungis speaker, speaker, malungis filba. Hmm, malnamatoka amado, malnamadungha butokal girel angal maas. Ninga o, ombo'ongil lo mesri ngotulungil abakadil ma. Ngotul di fitra any group rap people sel, are accessible to loyalty, alsal, marafil, marangakamaklow. Hmm, malungil abakadil ma dumanmo omisir ngi. Hmm, madangli ral adang esel ak malur renga sulil. Osisi'ul time eh, erul sanding edelsandiram na mema a gideklo katari bo'ngararan esar. Akumdasu komu'yang sangaktibul onmasa'ararulam aradaran esar. Di tapja, tara record deling tianga biskamama udo'udra lastir, el anga kim lastar tinga kim negatari bo'ngaringi lassilts. Se'gida, kungnyole langkarafil, osisi'ul time sel, loltrangi karakamam se' mesatra adra Taiwan away back. Edirka'mrail, malungil oturra, akal subuler ni'otul malauka. Maldirukunin, ya'ra adra Taiwan adirka bisitringi eh, omesang ksmear lamongil eh, muka improvement. Mang, marola ba, para amatalang esar eh, marur renga sulil. Eh, God bless her, and I hope everything in her future ah, demo fall according to his wishes. Mal sulang.
Em sawla esar, a'ngi sawl mitel, ah, ngarmnui.
Sulang te'al eh, Mr. Speaker, diregal bo'omter ablurangamlangui. Eh, gubenga sulir la, ah, blurra Republic of China Taiwan el mangal ambassador tirah Jessica Lee. El aigal stimulus urtil lollngse'orai ablur belau el, el part ringi amle rep trangamlangui, ah, ngamlangui amle tara, akatari bo'ngarakaplu viksagol girela rael milgatmo'kloy aigegidil ngesra Taiwan. Ngal ambassador Li adirekamal berokol osingil girela, armigegarengal, hariyud. El sel, sel Palau Olympic Team at Table Tennis, maldi butokotirangamlangui. Adirekamal ogiwa assistant ra Taiwan etemlo ratren ra, at Taiwan alatal builau ul magadamister, godolmes urtil el mallungil el performance urtil sira, ah, Olympic, sira Pacific Games. Magu, uranga sulil, armiga bangamlangui, diregal bo'uranga sulil, girela aigegidil, Desislative Digital Transformation, el blabodu recipient ringi el al olbil, ra diregal berokol osingil, blur Taiwan el girela, Capacity Building ngid, sulang esesemi's ambassador.
Em saw. A'ngi almitel swal. Oh, ige'da diregal aigid, aigal, aigal klo'udelil do'ala bel mongadudu eh me ngar tiam diregal. Makti kama'mel tederubal ko'ra ogundasu, blongitro besityang ogundasura wasidapsanku el tokor belau. Agidil lo ko'ra udrigadi, eh, ogundasu mital se'gidal ngakle bo'ulu ulahan friends rai gal tabul play. Eh, wa'ne somamal wasibol, el dil bo'ogui. Nige'd madangli aigegidil ro'ul blar ura, sel aigal state teridil ma nacional, el magidil olbir alulau. Magigol ogundasura dil bo'ogui, di'igora lilutim alak, sel tiamol ma eli'akan friends rai gal tabul. El lay mangdisegid ma da'ar adakodina mudu ma, ah, bugular singkem tigir ro'ul go'ngem da, ngangitil resolution ra ambassador Jessica Lee du hoy. Omto, namai, Floride.
Malmorme speaker, maga mega motion el adopter sel longeru, el ngar tiyal adoption calendar. Ah, motion to adopt House Joint Resolution Number Twelve Thirteen Thas Four S.
Em motion ra, a'florn didutu butok talon tirah Vice Speaker, nige'da bo'ul ko'ra di, brief tiyal resolution eh, singkem.
Speaker, ah, sulas speaker te'gid uka neks resolution. Direkil gotobidir ngi gid masenetil, eh, direkil sa'atnate renga sulir la, aigil atnate ambassador asyaban el belau, ke la, biruyuki, orikasa. Mas speaker adudungil direkil tat teridil malungil ambassador ablasyaban el melbelau. Ah, direkil manbara isel rubaga speaker. Nige'da madangli wasaya, talus resolution speaker la masak aigil. Baby ra aigil blal, mokla blu'asyaban, me ablubelani dia'ngi dlogu. Madangli wasit, belau masyaba la owe bakan, mutra, lastat takutel mamaga blu'la. Ah, antin twenil me'elasma'a, me'udatala speaker ngania tugubetsel, relations teridil ma blu'asyaban, maradra syaban. Speaker nganga, bulungil wasakmungil, pesunya kumangli, lubak. Eh, impa di'kemato setirungil. Nga'ra adra tarablu'asyaban, ya, wanpadi ranga al se'gidi blu. Tosu, posisi'ul ak, tamarak posisi'ul am. Oh, speaker nganga, anyway, nganga se'ran antin a, aminakwenitwenitul ngiya, mlingil temo ambassador ablur belau, amblo sya, syaban malbelas speaker. Nige'da madangli wasin malbutokl, maklow tokor blal, nalungit, udu'ul me ablur belas speaker tokora transplaxiu, di maklow project speaker. Ti'lo meseset, tarakul project ngara, ulangmanak ti'li ngan tova si'bitz. Ngiya, syaban la miski'adu, mokkunis speaker. Nige'da madangli wasin nganga mal, malbutokul mesmeridil tokora legal tool, ma publicel, ma pisiris, ma tokora tourism speaker, ma ti'askogila, ti'askogil malnamosupi el flan ngara, asyaban la maltemel belau. Agidil ubaka ude speaker. Tokora improvementa tokora ral, tokora skodyo. Speaker ngati direkil tarahmatol, mesabadu merbelau aigel tokora, ah, tokora passport, sel Electronic Machine Breathable Passport. Mosupi speaker udu'ulil, mosupi el ogi sel IOM, sel International Organization for Migration. Temlo passport aigil, passport tulumu. Maldirekil tokora, tokora Mediterranean Enforcement. Abangel sel UN Odyssey, sel UN Officer, Drags and Crime. Agidil ubaka speaker mosupi ulu'ulai aigil ngesu, logi aigil maklow, organizations speaker, mo'elang kada, kada part ringi. Nige'dil tarah mal, butokuligwamla, ngangal ma blilio, ma blur bela direk, gel ngesu at tokora aigel Unexploded Originang, se'gal bubu girwa, girgalai be'ngara atmet. Agidil ubaka speaker la mal, renga sulir mosupi el gan tinu se'gidi program, speaker at tokul ngesu, se'gidul project gan tinu ude speaker, remove aigil udu'ul belau. Tokora SinDDP Grassroots Program speaker, madangli wasin, hmm, tru se'gidi program ya tokora school, ma public building, supply, ma, tokora infrastructure speaker. Tokora, ah, ngesu ramlay, mosupi el, agidil ubaga lo, non speaker speaker. Nga'ra direkil mal misisi ya tokor diplomacy. Te'ya'gili nges speaker, nganga ambassador, manal mutu kosngi sel. Ah, gal ngalo termi ablur belas speaker na komian sulil. Monge, mosegid speaker, open aulamal pera atme, malasulit mung.
Em sawla, Vice Speaker, sel mal la, ora, malo otin galade, me don tiradilige traba, abnilio, malo udu'ul ngarinya goronti. Sulange speaker eh, ak direkil maldi mumte'adra abnilio, emomrenga sulir la ambassador, ra syaban, aigel butokulungil urelil, eh, nera abnilio, ma aigel butokulungil urelil, merablu'ul belau. Eh, direkamaldi mo'ish ngi ya mallungil future ra tokora, aurele'el, ma'kladran ngi, ngi mabil. Eh, direkil, lobor asyaban, eh, direkil gan tinu aigil udu'ul urelil, lobongel la government trasyaban, mallungil di'wara'ungil tele'ta el, el olngse'ugida adra belau. Malm saw le speaker. Ay, a'marino.
Sir Trisess.
A'w sir Trisess. Ah, galomo wisumra sesion rigide Floride.
Sulas speaker eh, dumlaro Trisess, madigre state ter sel, motion el ngaraulal is to adopt House Joint Resolution, Twelve Thirteen Thas Four S.
Se'gida motion, la, we're about to say ke' medu aulonsa delige ta, ta tobi ngarinya ko'ra.
Sulang, te'al eh, speaker, kuda mlararisess, mokdamla diskasakora, ah, additional, ah, ora di twigra, working or tiyal, ah, resolution sapedil inkopret aigil baby la, ah, ngesu, eh, kuknais aigel effort ta ra, am, ambassador Taiwan, Syaban, el Mister Orika Sawara, aigel kukpe'ila ngesu'ul, sel tru ra UNDP, mosupi el, me, olngse'uridil, a'ulubak, ulu'ay, Mr. Speaker, nige'd rubaka, malm lasmal extend aigel kuk, supi el ngesu'ra. Ambassador, absira Taiwan, tru la, UNDP, mora aigel, malru'udel, blu'ul belau, lngarasaw. A'ya, blurato'obima, blurasansuro, makdi propose ra oral amendment, el kuadi technical, edidungul, inserta'ngi tiyang. Of, ra line seven, ra page two, sel do'asing strengthening legislative capacity project, eh, moro insert ra including, the installation of solar projects to the state of atrovi and sansuro elementary schools, eh, with the UNDP. Kuda di'segida di'inserta'ngi, tritanga'ngi asa technical, marstafa dingul mora. Ah, arbay moro taipirin, loray, se'kora di, offer technical, ah, amendment speaker, man sawa te'al.
Se'gida, ora, o nitra, regura, atobil me ma sing mo, ah, Vice Speaker. Sir Trisess.
Yes, sir Trisess.
Nada sesion almutu momo'ola, momamol. Floride.
Malmorme speaker, kadumlaro Trisess, eh, el medel motion is to adopt, House Joint Resolution Number Twelve Thirteen Thas Four S, ak di reiterate ter se'gidal motion. El adopter te'gidal resolution, eh, kuda, tilvir ra Trisess, engarni, el wasing ngarinya maldi, minor or technical amendment, el bold inserta'ngi. Ma, once again, motion is to adopt House Joint Resolution Number Twelve Thirteen Four S.
Ke' insegida motion ra Floride, girel adoption tiyal resolution with some technical de, amendment el mogi. Metigir ro'ul go'ngem, mata adaptati'al resolution du hoy. Omto, lamai resolution, floor.
Malmorme speaker, item forty na diakangarni, ma petitions, memorials and communication, mandirekil diakangarni. Kadungara, item sixteen ra miscellaneous business eh, speaker.
Ke' kadungara, item sixteen, mangarinya member, swal mongudut aigil time eh, ulala open for everybody. Or la, ah, direkil gibons.
Oh, speaker eh, man sulang te'al eh, a'el, telita to'be, a'el, dimnaka, malte'alamal, mosesel giresel resolution ra, girela ambassador, ra Syaban. Itti'la ngangue, mal lungil arugudil, girel. Speaker and diswadal she, hmm, gal ambassador, adodo ngalil, malungil akser ngila, ambassador Syaban. Mal, down to'udangari arugul eh, isitok tu, eh, telgetra esar. Eh, nige'damadangli wasin, telgetra to'be ka, losher ngira, temla Trisess. Hmm, tara ambassador, dadongalil, lamlabi sita'ikal beckel state trablu'ul belau, Mr. Speaker. Au'ngsumama sheringi link. It's, while, aradra blue, adiregal malne filri, para malne special eh, portal ambassador. Ngilasaradyal le mobisita, visit trablura. Asansuro, matogel girel seli solar project teri'am, nargil no'pongela, minis education. Eh, utmakdi girel solar project ra, mora aigal, aigal trisku. Niya wana, brasongsol, manamla pool, ah, to'obi. Mong, itchi'iching, tu'aseng, di'gal, di'galit tokoi, tamral filri ngi'aradablu'eh, malne, tamalne sho'akusijon. Gorongi, eh, direkil gubet trit, eh, renga sulir la, ambassador, ra blurra, asyaban. Ah, ambassador ori kasa. Ra, se'gidal effort teri'mi, marungul, mosupi el, even myself eh, Mr. Speaker, sel klasaradyal, el mora aigel algu'e me nganga, akmosme. Hmm, mi'ututab dangi'gal a'adial. Oh, hmm, akmo'ma'arug, mo'she' mutulme. Ambassador Syaban la, ea'tu otur da'tem experience, mendawdinasengeng misisi radial, mo'ol mi'ututulwai ngagam. Maktimo ngutalte'al eh, renga sulir, a, gero'ul, effort teri'mi, help pra, takaldi, ti'la blur belau, ma aigal testal, aigal balwa, aigal sixteen states. Swal sheringi link, guk tu'aseng mal, netokubetsi, telita artma, sulang.
Em sawla, ah, gibons. Ngal, ilara angal rubak. Ke'dabul mo'kasus, mangarinya tam, ngilong kasus, yongaseng. Aklo'el malang, ah, tige'lo sisirwai ngakal, di'aka, bozu. Aklo'el malang, alaseng kangklo'egreel, sel humesang ngarinya, tristri'ibal yurir, alaseng kalaklo, kalakekere. Ndigo malre'la, aku'lang, arakalaseng klo'egreel, nakalikal, tamani ngigida, malungil clean, di'aka uy'ingi. Mre'ngi nakatel, wasikau klo'egreel. Nguay si'ulil, adeko'laso, ngalakalmo. Tamral ko'ramo misir ngi'abulorael. Eh, ma aigel beckel ngesu'ra, el mia o, o mu'ul, uli ngarir belau. Ngaria mutu swal mo'udu ra, misil nges. Alagayang ngi Floride, di'akamo mesra teme de, ki'da three day eh, ah, special, medela one day, na, lidu'ga, ta'adibo, sabsiktukoli dungil ra. Ya, wera bodu Trisess eh, Flor, akora dimundasaseme, edo, diringal ko'ra ke'garel, diliridil. Eh, sinse'gadangar ti'agidil tokora, va'tsetil ko'ra, o'vidil aurerele, di'sebedele, odor almo'usir vitam, maluga dimongarke'am, man, fi, sikro'le, m'informer til wasewir about to, usanadaiman suman, ogundasati'agidil a, talamna meradru'ui. Medim speri a, Floride, president Senator Silbitam, mal, tiril staffa, clear. Ti'arimwa, imwa'mo. Eh, omowaisertu rasigil ko'ra wredil, emsain la, aman Trisess. Ige'da di'ardu Trisess, o'ilie, o'ilal, momo'omera, di'port. Trisess.
Tokora Trisess eh, speaker.
Ya, ma sesion almutu momu'ul eh, Floride.
Malmara olubongle speaker, la, omogo miscellaneous business. Eh, kadungara announcement, al ngarinya.
Ah, oygamedi da, psat te'al, adilige trairai, reporter sel urelil lo, informer Senator, sel kada wredil, el Trisess.
Sulange, Mr. Speaker, ngarya te'al, damor sel vitang eh, madadu'ra Presidenta Senate. Aigel aigil bladkatmo'el, alshil se'gal tabul resolution, ti'la pacheta mong, dingil besul, lans'adal malmal, metirahukka, sesiona afteri'idil mo'omes, sulang.
Akamal sawe, direkita'ir, agorundasasarangania kurangod, eh, te'ya'te'al, drebodqadangin, dingegidil, na reporter, sel dingil besul, labolulul, mang, ulala ulale me Flor.
Sulas speaker, ah, di'ak announcement ra reklal, ndigomesatil, dangwar ngarinya seli ulaklatka.
El sel eh dinner reception ora malsumra ambassador rasia bal. Apa biaramler kaum arbekun members, kora di kauklatpik tergel guka gil ngelmo. Atestaim eh, speaker, ek mega motion. El wishes rtila play subject to call of the chair.
Segida motion ra Flor, mla segen tige rogul go ngemda wishes ra uredil du hoy. Ndiya mla, eser wishes.